Winston Second Budget Committee Meeting, May 5th, 4:00 PM.
You just have your agenda. Did you find your second agenda for the Urban Renewal?
For the Urban Renewal.
Yes, sir.
It's after this one?
It should be just before you get to the actual gray silver agenda. I mean, budget for Urban Renewal. Let me help you. No, you're in two parks.
Two parks?
Your agenda is right on top of the gray silver. We all need a hand every once in a while. Age has nothing to do with it.
Okay, it's Wednesday, May 5th. This is the City of Winston Budget Committee and Urban Renewal Agency Budget Adoption Meeting. We're going to review the budget first and then discuss questions, changes, or suggestions. Go ahead, Ann.
So Mark is not going to be here tonight, so hopefully I will have answers to questions. We were very fortunate, I have to say, the good news for both the City and Urban Renewal is that the taxes came in. I know that was our greatest fear is that people with the pandemic, we're going to have money, property taxes wouldn't get paid, but the good news is that wasn't the case, and it looks like our taxes are coming in as we had budgeted. So for this upcoming year, we will have a smaller amount of carryover. We've spent some sizable money on a couple of different items, but we're still doing really well. We bumped up the taxes a little bit for next year, because like I said, we did well, and I think we came over just a smidge for the current year. We've left the interest at $6,000. We may come in a little shy on that, we'll have to wait and see. Interest still is nominal, so you're not getting anything in any of the banks or anything else. But what we'll see for that $6,000 will probably be continued interest payments on the core project. So that's the majority of that. Under Materials and Services, we've left everything pretty comparable as it was last year with the exception of the audit. Our auditors let us know that they have been put under more mandates, more training, and that their costs were going up. Last year, we went out for a proposal to see if we could get any new auditors. No one, absolutely no one. No one's doing cities right now. I reached out to everybody that we had. We got zero response last year, so we're going to be staying where we're at for a while. And so we had to increase their audit fees. So that was the increase on the materials and services. We still have a little bit of money for some potential capital outlay projects. This past year, we worked on completing the parking lot for the police department, and we have budgeted for this upcoming year funds that were to be set aside for the Douglas County Co-op. And that still leaves us with about $74,302 for, and some other projects should it come up. Capital outlay, $148,485. Debt service is the debt service on our note, and if you are interested, you'll see behind the gray pages, we have two payments each year that we make, one that's interest-only in December, and a principal and interest payment in June.
Is this Terry? Who's on the phone? Terry? Can she not hear me?
So you will see the principal and interest breakdown under the debt service for that, a total of $83,829. And on the second page, we have left for special payments or loans or grants, those are the loans and grants that the local businesses come and ask for. We have set aside $40,000 for that. So pretty short and simple and sweet. We anticipate having revenues of $293,934. And we've budgeted expenditures in the same amount, $293,934. Do you have any questions?
How much questions? No questions?
Okay. If everybody is okay with this, then I would ask for a motion and a second to move this forward to the Urban Renewal Board for the upcoming meeting in June, so that we can get this adopted.
It's a move. Have I a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. We will go on to the agenda then for the City of Winston, it's the second one. You're going to find your minutes, or the white minutes are on top of it, splits the two pink pages. And I put those minutes on there so that you would have a chance to look at those before this meeting, because this is when you're going to approve these minutes.
You want these approved, right?
Yes. Did you find your agenda? Your second one, your second pink agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. If you want to pull that out, that's where we're going to go. We're going to actually close the Urban Renewal meeting and call the City of Winston meeting to order.
Okay. Do I have a motion to close the Urban Renewal meeting? So, a second? Move. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now do I have a motion to open the budget meeting for the City of Winston? It's a move. Have I a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Point of order, if I may please, is this for the Budget Committee or the whole group of us?
All of us.
All of us.
Yes, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, if everybody will take a look at these minutes, if anybody had any questions, now's the time to let me know, because I would ask for you to read them and then make a motion to approve those, please.
Do I have a motion to adopt the minutes of April 29th?
I made a motion to adopt the minutes of April 29th.
Do I have a second?
The 29th, but it says Thursday to April 30th.
Yes, this is last year's minutes. No, so yes, so they were the 30th.
Okay, sorry.
Yes. This was last year's minutes.
Yeah.
I made a motion to adopt the minutes as read, not be approved, the Thursday to April 30th of 2020.
Do I have a second?
Second. I'm here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Now you need for Thursday, April 29th, 2021, right?
No. No, those aren't ready yet. You have before you Saturday, May 2nd of 2020. This was the one that was held at the community center last year.
Okay. Cindy, Teresa DeWolff just wrote, said that she's trying to call in and it keeps cutting out.
That's Teresa, and she can't hear us. That's Teresa. I thought it was Terry. Okay. All right.
If everybody will look at the May 2nd minutes, and we'll make that motion while we're trying to get Teresa on board here.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 2nd, 2020? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Minutes passed.
Thank you. Well, give us just a minute here.
Okay.
See if we can get Teresa on board here. Teresa, are you there?
Yes.
Oh, can you hear us better?
Yeah, I can hear you now. I can hear you far enough before it's cutting out most of the time.
It's cutting out, all right. I have you on my cellphone, so we're going to do our best here. Put her over here by Ann.
Thank you.
She's the only one on the phone, so.
Do you want to use this so people can hear that?
Yeah, maybe. Thank you. That's a little microphone right there. She's the only one there, so, on the phone, so she should be turned up the way up. Okay. Okay, so the first part of the budget, it's going to be pages, if you're looking at page numbers, it's going to be pages one, two, and three, and then we're going to get to parks, and I'm going to let Andy do a little bit of speaking when we get there. But I'm going to start off with the general fund and the revenue sources. We are hoping to have a carryover this coming year of $520,575. Mark and I looked at all of the numbers, we didn't change a lot, we did bump up the franchise fees a little bit with anticipation of some additional franchise fees coming in. Looking here to see what else has changed. We cut the transient room taxes back, since we've lost one of our hotels, and the one that had the majority of the transit room taxes, or a good chunk of it anyway, we backed those down a little bit. Let's see, what else did we change here? I want to say that he bumped up the, haven't gotten to him yet, property taxes. Yeah, he bumped up the revenue sharing a little bit, we're coming in a little bit over this year, so hopefully that will, you never know with a state, because that's a state revenue that we get per capita, per our population, so it's hard to say if we'll see really an increase in that or not. The police contracts are going to be for the two SROs. Law enforcement grant, those are going to be of any kind of a speed grant, or a DUI grant, or distracted driver grant that the police department might get. Other grants from resources, police, 34.5, that is for, I believe it's, I never have the right name for it, but I think it's the fingerprinting.
Which one?
The 34.5 is for the fingerprinting machine. If we get that grant, then we can purchase that. Mark bumped up the taxes a little bit, like I said, again, they did not take a hit this current year that we thought they might, and we've had good home sales, everything's still progressing better than you might have expected, so we bumped those up a little bit. Let's see, if there was anything else significant, I don't believe there was. So we have budgeted for total revenue for the general fund of $2,920,362. Does anybody have any questions on that?
I read where the feds are going to be sending out.
Potentially some more money, yeah.
Are we going to put a place in there, or are we going to wait until we get that?
We're going to wait and see. They haven't told us what we can spend it on yet, so it's really hard to bring something in, potentially if it's for maybe capital outlay items, so it may have to go to a street or infrastructure-type project, we just don't know. They're telling us that it's going to be split into potentially two parts, and they have not told us yet what strings are attached to it. So we don't know if we can save some of it, use it for future stuff, or if it's something you've got to get it and spend it, so we don't know. As a matter of fact, Mark and Brandon and I attended an online meeting and really didn't get a whole lot of information, other than cities were sharing what they would like to be able to spend the money on, and projects that they have that need.
So I take it from what you're saying, we're going to be real conservative in our approach on it?
Yes, absolutely. And when and if we get the funds and we know how we can spend them, we'll probably end up doing a supplemental budget. But right now, I don't think anyone has any indication of what we're going to spend the money on. Okay, so with that, we'll go on to the expenditure portion, and the page two is administration, and that just covers the administration portion of the personnel. Not a lot of changes. As we go through personnel, you're going to see, I have some good news and some bad news. It's kind of a, I don't know. Even Steven, I guess, good news was, is that insurance costs were going to remain flat as far as medical, dental, those types of things, that we're talking about benefits. And the bad news, and workers' comp is going to also stay flat. The bad news was, is that PERS went up, and PERS went up a lot. I grabbed my numbers just so I'd have them. I think everybody's going to get the 2% for contract for cost of living adjustment, but PERS went up for the majority of us, 41%.
Wow.
Yes, 41%. The current general services, an OPSEC person, which is what the majority of our staff is, went from 803 this fiscal year to 11.34% starting July 1st. So you can thank our legislators for that.
Have we ever looked into going and getting that privately done instead of going through the state?
You don't get to, Derek, you are a state. You are part of the state. The first time I ever got my own personal PERS statement, and I pay in my 6%, and I lost money that year, and I said, "How do I opt out?", and she said, "You quit your job for the city." And I went, "Oh, okay, thank you." Yeah, so no, it's not an option.
Okay.
It is not an option. So we have personnel expenditures, like I said, they've gone up just not a lot, from 138,674 to 14244. Materials and services, I think we left those pretty much, yes, we did, exactly the same, pretty staying standard where we're at. $3,600 in capital outlay, that's for three new computers. Cindy, myself, and payroll, we need three new computers, so it's going to be hopefully Windows 10 compliant. We're going to get our Springbrook software finished, being upgraded probably end of June 1st of July, and so we're going to need those computers, so that's what that's for.
It's actually not bad at all.
No, it's not. We don't need anything fancy, just need something that you can get your work done on. So administrative expenditures, total of $151,994. Page three goes into our court, municipal court, again, you're going to see a reduction there. We had our municipal court clerk retire, and so our new hire, she's doing a fabulous job, but we did hire her at a lower rate, so she's going to work her way up. So we've got $81,803 for personnel expenditures in court. Materials and services, I want to say that Mark may have reduced something here. It looks like we increased NOC, because I know there's a few things that don't fall into these other line items. We left prisoners' board there, they've been doing a lot more citing and releasing and a lot less prisoners staying there, because the jail rates are going up, it's just under $100 a day for prisoners. Jury fees, we left those the same, we don't have too many jury trials. Defense counsel, Mark bumped that back a little bit, and I'm hoping that that will be sufficient, you never know, the majority of the people, if they want an attorney, we end up paying for those, so that's where that cost goes. Litigation, he bumped down a little bit on litigation. That's, again, that's our attorneys, where we pay to fight the criminals. I always have a hard time with that, we have to bring them into court, I have to pay my nice policemen to go pick them up, and then I have to pay to prosecute them, and then if they don't have the funds, we have to pay to get them legal representation. So that's my spiel, I'm going to drop it there. We've reduced it down a little, and we reduced it down a little bit to 34,150. I know, I'm sorry, I try not to get into too big of a ramp, but that's one of mine. Again, new equipment would be potentially, if she needed a new computer or something there, I don't have anything anticipated for sure.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, yes.
Brandon, where does your e-ticket thing come into this?
It's in my budget.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. So court, municipal court, would be $116,953 for their expenditures. Any other questions?
How much does the court end up making off of tickets and fines?
They don't make money, it's not a money-making process. If we're lucky, we break even. Yep. As a matter of fact, if you see, because Mark only, we have 116,900 here, and we probably won't get it, but I think Mark was, and we do get a few other citations in from, if we send something to district court, we'll get a little bit of money back occasionally from them, but Mark budgeted 140, and we probably won't get that, but.
That's an actual payout from?
That's potential, and not a lot of that is carryover, too, from previous years, because there were years when we've lost money. The court, I mean, didn't even cover it, but that's what you want it to do, you want it to be able to at least cover its cost, but it's not a guarantee, and it's not a money-making thing at all, so.
Ann, is that $120,000 just the city share in it of that, or the amount that you have to pay the state, is that figured in there?
Oh, no. Are you talking about the revenue that I just quoted, or the expenditures?
In the court fund, don't you have?
Yeah, we don't budget the court fund itself, because the court fund doesn't really have any money. It collects money and disseminates it to all of the parties.
The fines and forfeitures?
Yes.
Is that the money after the state takes their share?
Yes, this would be our portion.
So how much goes the state then?
Oh, I don't know, I'd have to get you a report.
It's a substantial amount.
Yes, yes.
I want to say it's probably like 85% or whatever.
So.
They get all of their money first, both the jail gets a certain portion per, and I don't know if it's ORS or what it was that gave the jail, it's a house bill. It was a house bill that they passed that gave the county more money for the jail.
I think eventually some of these people might like to know that the state's making way more money.
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah, we're the last ones to get paid, I'm sorry, yes. Yes. Okay, and we're going to go to the parks, and you're going to see, these are requests from Andy and his part-time, and I don't know that that percentage is correct, but his, or maybe it is, I don't remember if I changed or not, his administrative assistant, part of Sarah will come out of here, budgeted for some shop tools, budgeted for two vehicles, Mark is only going to fund one. Which one was it? Was it the 3/4 ton 4x4?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the 3/4 ton two-wheel drive for 29 got next, but he did budget for the mower, because we need a new mower. And we did also, Andy made a note here, and it is on the general fund that we just looked at in the revenue sources, we did pull in $10,000 from the reserve fund if we need it, and if the organization, which one is it, is doing?
Yeah, it's the, basically, it's a group with ED, and it's kind of spearheading that, looking at the billion, which has been kind of an ongoing up there for the community park, so that's one of the park projects that we, park project that the park were voted on is make that our next project, so it'll be that.
So if that's a go, we will have that $10,000 that the city can contribute towards that. And then you asked for $100,000 for some additional stuff at the public works, and I think Mark hacked that in half. I think he said, "Yeah, you're doing good to get $50,000." So we'll see what that offers up for us.
Ann, just a real quick question?
Yes, sir.
I know we have not got that extra money coming in, and it's coming in from COVID, and we don't know, let's say it's going for capital outlay and infrastructure and whatnot. Can the money be taken from that and bring it back up to $100,000 from that?
Potentially, sure. Yeah, sure.
Okay.
If it's acceptable.
Yes, if it's accessible, and it's not, you know, strings aren't tied to a particular thing that would not allow that to happen, certainly.
So basically, what we're saying then is that the amount that we're approving today and everything has a degree of flexibility to it potentially.
Well, no, you have to submit your budget, and you can't leave it open-ended.
I understand that, but I'm talking about the flexibility means that you can add to it with a supplemental budget.
Yes, yes, supplemental budgets.
What you're wishing in that one hand?
Yeah.
Okay, so going to parks, then, on page four, we have budgeted for personnel this year, $91,304. And materials and services, $51,750. Again, I don't think there was anything significant. Andy, it looks like you bumped up ground supplies some, is it the water system, ground supplies?
Yeah, we pretty much, we've been trying to get a better handle on it, as everybody knows, parks, if we had $500,000, we could put $500,000 into our parks, I think, so as we move forward with addressing some of the sprinklers and ground, you know, the fertilizers and, you know, just general maintenance things, we kind of kept that, we did bump down, Mark bumped down, let me say "we", because he's the boss, but he did take the supplies down a bit.
Right.
Of course, the supplies of the sprinklers, which are quite expensive, normal supply thing, but it is what it is.
I think that was one of the only ones that he really knocked it down.
That was pretty much it, yeah.
Yeah. So Andy had asked for $54,750, but Mark had reduced it down to $51,750. Capital outlay, again, you saw those items here, Andy had asked for $29,006, and again, the one item that was removed was the $2,900 for the other vehicle. So we've got capital outlay in the amount of $26,700. So parks is a total of $169,754. Any other questions on parks?
Andy, do you notice that as more people move here, that parks are being used more? Or, like, I know, I've been here almost three years, and there's obviously been a significant growth, have you noticed the parks getting?
Well, they're better now, of course, with the COVID restrictions, so we were pretty tight there, which we're all quite aware of. It was pretty tight during that time, but yeah, typically when the weather comes out like now, we have this, the folks, the families, getting out, enjoying our beautiful parks we have here in Winston, we get a lot of, staff gets a lot of compliments, council gets a lot of compliments on our parks, people come visiting, we have people show up that are not even aware of our parks, and they're like, "Wow, this is even here." So, yeah, we get good turnout on that.
Okay, then we're going to go to non-departmental, which means it's other expenditures that don't belong to any specific department, and we have maybe a duplication, but the three new computers, as I talked about before, for $3,600, and software upgrade, we should be finishing it up, but I left some money in there just in case we need it. And software upgrade, we should be finishing it up, but I left some money in there just in case we needed it. Nine thousand dollars for that Springbrook software upgrade. So under non-departmental materials and services, it looks like, well, I know we increased some, a few lines, but not a lot. Everything was pretty, pretty close to where we are right now for this fiscal year. The audit's gonna go up, so we had to bump that up. Again, the audit for both the city and urban renewal. They anticipate it being a one-time increase, so I'm hoping that they're correct on that. Prior to that, there are increases that have been, you know, in the neighborhood of three to five percent. This is a huge, this is a huge bump this year.
What is the huge jump in the planning activities?
It's just a placeholder. We don't know what's going on with our planning right now. The county is struggling to keep us with a planner. So Mark just put some money there as a placeholder. I think...
If city attorney fees are twenty-six thousand dollars, seems like we spent a lot more than that every year for attorney fees.
Nope, we actually haven't, we actually haven't.
They haven't discovered your discrepancies yet?
No, we think it's yours.
No, actually, we've been pretty lucky. The biggest cost to us on the city attorney fee was when we, what were we doing with Cindy? Was it that cost us so much money?
Marijuana.
The marijuana ballot stuff.
Marijuana ballot.
That was, that was expensive, that was really expensive. We took a hit on that. But short of that, we've been doing pretty good. Visitor promotion, that line item, we bumped that up a little bit. Basically, that is the, includes both the discretionary and the, the amount of money that needs to be spent from the transit room tax on visitor promotion. So that's what that line item is. We haven't been asked yet, but we're assuming that we will be asked again for the sobering center contribution. So we have that in there this year again.
That is moving forward, by the way.
Okay.
The whole process.
Good, good. So we have up those a little bit. We've moved up to two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars for materials and services, non-departmental. Again, that twelve thousand six was two items that I had mentioned before. The computers and the Springbrook software.
And, excuse me, professional services, can you give us just a brief example of what that might be?
Professional services would be any other professional service that we, that we don't normally have a contract with that doesn't fit into a particular line item.
IT.
We have IT, we also have the, our webmaster that works with our webpages.
Perfect, I was just curious what, that's my, okay, thank you.
Absolutely, you're welcome. Capital outlay, or, we did capital outlay transfers. We will be moving four thousand and fifty dollars to the Park SDC. That's a part we've, we've collected this year. And again, that's, the Park STCs are for, unfortunately, not just for park maintenance, but those have to be for park improvements. So we're gonna set that aside. Like I said, potentially, if we don't move that ten, it'll go in with that ten for the pavilion or whatever we get going on that. We are going to put contingency in this year, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars.
Is there, is there a proposed plan for that, or?
Contingency, no, no.
Well, I was just seeing if you were looking ahead at something, or?
Nope, that's, contingency's gonna be for something that we don't know about.
It's really good to see that you're putting it in.
Absolutely.
Trying to do it for you?
It's, well, anytime we have some to put in contingency, we do. We really, you know, that's always a goal.
Does that fund buildup year after year?
It does not, it does not. If you don't spend it, it rolls over to the next year. And then again, though, if you're continuing to do well, then you can have that contingency again, absolutely. Okay, so the next portion of the general fund is the library. And we were asked by the Friends of the Winston Library to budget for, and they will have to get permission from the council, of course, when it's time, but to place that ten thousand dollars this year as a contribution to the Friends of the Winston Library.
Is it possible to raise it up a bit? Because, you know, the expenses go up, and anyway, you know, the cost of operation goes up if we just take it up two thousand dollars. I contacted Darrell, Darrell Hurd, you know, Senator Hurd, and also Senator, Congressman Lee. And apparently, they got, one of them got two million dollars of funds that they can spend as they see fit. And then also, the House got one million dollars each member as they see fit. And I have not got any response back to it, but Dallas Hurd's actually was very positive about that. And so I asked him for a hundred thousand dollars, and they said, well, how much real hard dollars would you like? Would, would you be willing to, and I said forty. So that is in the mix, but it's no absolute guarantee.
No, and if we get that, we'd have to do a supplemental budget again.
Correct, but I thought I, I should make that known. But in the meantime, I actually think ten thousand dollars may not be enough for what, what they, they got planned. They got grants coming in, et cetera. And if we do have availability of the next two thousand dollars, I think that would go a long way for the library, because that is an instrumental part of the, of the city. And as I understand it, the, the attendance is growing with that also, is that not correct? And so the, with higher attendance, the higher is the cost of operation. So I, I'd like to see if we can move that up to, you know, just two, just two thousand dollars.
We need, that's what these, your nine are here for.
That's correct.
So you wanna make an emotion, or?
I would make it a motion.
Maybe we discuss it.
Two thousand dollars for twelve thousand dollars.
I guess where's the two thousand dollars gonna come from?
Is, is that something that it might be best to hear clear through the budget and then jot it down, then go back?
No, no, because it's gonna affect this portion of the budget.
No, where I'm coming from, though, the other money might affect some other part of the budget. And we have no bumps, and there's, maybe there's no problem to it.
Because, you know, we did have fairly decent carryover. Our projections are a little bit higher, and two thousand dollars for a backbone of the community, I think is incidental.
I, I don't have a problem with that. The problem that I have is if we start moving money until the overall budget is looked at, then we might tend to get a little bit confused, or...
You're almost, you're almost done with the general fund, and this has to balance on its own. So if he wanted to do that, my suggestion would be to increase it to twelve thousand and to take two thousand off of the contingency. And that would be the easiest.
Which is fairly healthy.
Okay, let's, let's make a motion then, and then we'll discuss.
I make the motion that we had had two thousand dollars to the library fundraising from ten thousand to twelve thousand dollars.
I stuck with that motion.
Discussion?
I don't have a problem with it, I just had a concern on this.
The only place I could see taking it from would be the contingency. And lowering that a little bit. This is the first year from now on that we've had a contingency, you know, while, right?
It has.
I've seen it in the past where they were possible, taking money, money out of other funds.
Right, right.
And that's, that's what I've been checking. Well, if it's established, it's established fund, then we could go ahead and move it. If it's, if it's like you're saying, you have wishy-washy, then no. If we've got established fund that we can draw from.
It drops us down from one fifty-one to one forty-nine, which is still pretty significant.
Before they used to have, I remember it was ten.
Right, right. I don't know a hundred and forty-nine thousand, get you much anymore, but...
Okay.
Counselor, do you wanna make a motion and take it out of the contingency and?
Yes.
Don't we have to approve the first motion?
Right.
Yes.
It was the first and the second.
All in favor of ending discussion?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor of approving the first part of the budget, or the first part of, oh, my God. The library fund, how's that? The library fund.
The increase of the library.
The increase of the library fund.
To two...
Two thousand.
Two thousand dollars.
Yes, and decreasing the operating contingency by two.
Okay, and decrease the contingency from the, contingency by two thousand. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? First time libraries got money they didn't ask for.
Okay. Now, we're into...
No idea, Scott.
Police, police department. Law enforcement.
I do have a guy. You want me to talk?
Yep, Brandon, do you wanna go over your, Brandon's gonna talk about his capital outlay first.
Members of the budget committee, community members, be easy on me, please. No. So I, I kind of listed out what items that we were trying to push towards getting to get the department kind of up to speed a little bit better. The e-tickets was kind of approached by council a little bit and by staff. So we did some research on it. The forty-one six hundred was something that I put on the list. I believe that got axed out. Correct?
I believe so.
That was, that was removed. The thermal imager, which is a night, basically like a night vision, it detects heat and whatnot. I've been trying to get one a year, trying to get them outfitted in the vehicles, so I put another one in. The Conex containers, as everyone's aware, that we're doing a back parking lot. We got the concrete pads, everything's set up for it. They're forty thousand dollars for one, the evidence one that we're looking at. That got cut to twenty thousand. The vacuum, which is a maintenance, maintenance vacuum, basically, it's like a car vacuum or a wet vac. Will go out in the parking lot for the guys to vacuum out their vehicles. That's fifteen hundred.
Car wash there too?
There's a car wash area there, yeah, or will be when it's completed, yes. Cabinets, more cabinets for our, our office, which is gonna be going in the conference room and evidence room, I believe, is where we have those slated for. Cameras, where the outside cameras on that. So, so the cameras that we, we budgeted for is our surveillance system that's outside the building now. When the parking lot is completed, I'm gonna have cameras put, one for the future evidence container to watch over that. And the other one's gonna be on the pole watching the backside of the building towards Rose Street. So they're about a thousand bucks apiece. I have the data cables and everything set up with power to those locations in this project. Portable radios, that got slashed. That's the kind of direction I was getting pushed for upgrading our radios. That's basically two portable radios, I need fourteen of them. So I'm working, I was trying to work on getting like two a year. So that got, that got slashed. The LiveScan, which is a grant, that's the fingerprint machine. I have the lobby, the whole area set up for that. I have the data electrical, everything's set up with a secured cabinet for the PC. We're just waiting for the grant to come out. Sergeant Stip will write the grant on that when we get it. And hopefully, we can get that. Most of the agencies are going to that, it's a pretty neat machine. And the patrol vehicles are the ones that we ordered. I don't suspect, I, we have a feeling that they're not gonna be in by budget here. So we went ahead and put them into next year's budget, is what we did, the ones that were currently approved.
Yes.
The funds will come from this year's budget, correct?
It comes out of the traffic safety. So, yeah, I mean, we're just budgeting.
Rolling up forward?
Yeah, we, we're, we're gonna probably get the cars towards the last week of June, somewhere in there. So I said, just hold on to them, tell them, so on the safe side to get them. So she doesn't have to do supplemental budget on it, we can just get it rolled through, so.
Chief, on the e-tickets and also on the LiveScan fingerprinting?
Yes.
Is there any chance of payback or being cost-effective with those?
Well, I will tell you that the fingerprints, if we get the LiveScan, I'm gonna open it up more than just two days a week. We actually make money on that. And when we were open prior to COVID, that's really the only area that the police department makes money. And I think we were around nine thousand, eight, nine thousand a year when we were running normal on two days. The LiveScan's a lot quicker, it's confirmed while you do it. It's, it's a win-win.
And how are you making money off the grant?
Well, we, we charge twenty-five dollars a, for two cards and then twenty-five additional. Yeah, so...
And that's all, the LiveScan is all gonna be grant?
Yeah, so...
So background checks, basically?
What's that?
Background checks, which are usually...
It could be for multiple things. It could be doing them for the court when the judge, it saves us money if we process our own. If we send them to the, to the jail, it's forty-five bucks for booking. And sometimes they still gotta go up there for photos and stuff like that, but we try to do our own, save costs.
So in other words, it's a money saver?
Overall, yeah, it's gonna make money, of course, is what it's gonna do. That's really the only area that the police department makes money is there. And I think if I open it up more than just how it was set up previously on Tuesdays and Thursdays, between a certain amount of hours, I'm gonna open it up through the week, so...
Everybody who needs a licensed real estate nursing.
Yeah, it's all a multitask.
They all have to fingerprint, no?
They have to go somewhere.
You'll be able to do it just like the UPS order.
Yeah, and, and what's nice about it is our rates are decent. So we get a lot of people to come down from Roseburg to wherever.
And what about the e-tickets?
The e-tickets, you know, I, if I did a cost analysis and I said, you know, is it worth the, the amount of citations that we get, which we don't get any money for hardly, it doesn't really balance out. But the thing about the e-tickets that's nice, and the research that I did on it, is it's a cost savings to personnel. We know City Hall has no staff, right? So when the officer writes a citation on the street, it's auto-populated, which is slowing, or it's increasing the time, reducing the time that he's on the traffic stop, which could increase workload, right? So that's a benefit on the police end. It automatically downloads into Sandy's records in my office, so she's not multitasking on that. And then it automatically downloads in the court. So it's submitted to the court for that date, the minute the officer pushes the button, it's done. So there's not a lot of people duplicating work. So it's gonna reduce, reduce the workload for the court that can be utilized for other city functions. It's gonna reduce load for my administrative assistant that I can use for other functions. It's, it, that way, it's a win-win.
So it's a timing cost savings?
Yeah. And it's also looked at as officer safety for being on the road longer, whatever, writing citations. But I look at it as kind of an offset. Now, you got the officer looking at his computer versus writing a citation. I mean, it's kind of, you know, he's not on the road as long, that's nice.
It's more just a data entry saving.
Two more questions on that. Is there a grant available for that?
So we looked into that, I think Sergeant Miller looked into that, and we could not find one. There was an ODOT grant that we were looking at, didn't come through, and it didn't apply for the e-tickets. So as it stands right now, no. I, I reached out to Gary Koppenstein in Roseburg, who uses it, the chief up there. They really like them, but there's, you know, there's a balance, there's a learning curve. And there's some issues that happened, and it's like any computer, right? You gotta work out all the kinks, and then it works fairly well.
And the second question is with the increased people moving here, I thought we were close, or pretty close to getting another officer. So would this take the place of that officer?
No, no. I mean, you're, you're, the police department, even, even back when the chief was a chief for me, we always run on a, a, one, other than having the school officers, which has been a blessing. They've been great, because they help us out at multiple levels. We run one duty officer a shift. So when one's off, one's on, and so there's either overtime or comp being collected. It's very difficult to kind of balance that. That's why our, our, our load on comp and vacation's really high.
Right.
It's, it's off balance, so that would take the place of it. We, we need an officer, we're due.
Brandon, on the radio, is this taking care of the problem that you spoke about last year about not being...
So, yes and no. We're, we're about eighty-five percent where we want to be now. We're, officers on their portables were not able to hear when they went, I mean, even back to the day that you were, you were on the job. We just could not hear inside a residence. And typically, with the city of Winston being a small department, it's a two-person response that we're going to one response, one officer going to a disturbance. And the minute you go to that house, you have no communication. Dangerous. We, I, I worked with Wayne Stinson's, the sheriff's office. The city of Roseburg turned down what they called a standalone system. It's a repeater system, it's a one-way on log one or our main channel only, that dispatch can hear us, but doesn't return the favor for us. So we're getting closer to where now we can talk on the radios and our portables, dispatch at least can hear us, but we still can't get the return because it's one directional. And they, and we worked a deal out with the water district to get it up on the tower up on Galaxy. So that's, they just got it activated, it's working better, but in a residence still the same. The Apex radio that we're going to is the one that we just put in the station, it's the new version of the radios that are coming out. The radios we have, I love them, but they quit making the equipment for them, so we have no choice but to start to switch. Looked at the repeater systems, they're about ten grand a car. The repeater systems, if I was to buy them, I have to get them with the Apex radio. If I buy them with the old radios, I can't use that repeater for the new radio system. So I have no choice but to buy the repeaters for the cars. I have not budgeted anything for repeaters yet. I, you know, I, it's kind of wait, I mean, the cars are getting expensive. So we held off on that to see how this is gonna work with the new Apex radio. The Apex radio is one watt stronger, so it's a six watt radio. There's still a hundred watts in the cars, but the portables went to a six watt. And I've used Gary's, the chief's up at Roseburg's, I brought it down and experimented out on the street, it works just like a mobile, in a house is exactly the same, so.
So, which is a very bad problem, maybe.
It's a bad problem.
Even back in the day, we went to a house, got shot at.
Couldn't hear, right?
Yeah. Is this something that if we develop a wish list on this COVID money that we could?
Oh, yeah.
Maybe put, because somebody can get killed.
Most definitely.
I will tell you that I looked at grants, there's a lot of grants out there for Motorola. Problem being is Big Brother Douglas County did a grant about ten years ago, which got us the radios in our cars. It was, we did a sub-grant to the county, and all the other agencies did that as well. Problem with that is, they didn't continue with the study and continue building on that system as required by the original grant. So when I reached out to start researching the grant by council's request, I started digging on that, I got their plans and what they've done. And then I called Wayne and I'm like, hey, what's the scoop on this, I'm not seeing any, and he said the commissioners have shut it down every time. So there's been no movement. Problem is, is that all the agencies are gonna take, it's a thirty-two million dollar project to upgrade our radio system in the county, thirty-two million bucks. So no one has the money, and you know how the county's going right now. So we're hoping that some of that COVID money, me and the manager and Warren, three of the cities made that one of the number one goals for the commissioners. Commissioner Boyce, I think, was on that meeting, telling them that we want updated nine-in-one system. It benefits everybody, it benefits our ambulance service, our fire service, and us.
And you're gonna have to pay for it.
But we can't apply for the grant because they haven't completed their end of the deal. So if I even wrote the grant, and it would cost me ninety thousand dollars to do an overall survey, is required part of the grant. So, yeah, do we want to spend ninety thousand and let them do the survey on the overall system and then say, yeah, no, and then we're out with ninety grand? Which is what I really need for equipment, it doesn't make sense for us to do, so.
No, so.
It's on, it's absolutely on the wish list.
Yeah.
Well, the grant for the, if that came through on that, and the cars are already accounted for, it wouldn't actually leave that much for them.
Right, so currently, like, right now, on the two new vehicles that you approved me to purchase, I ordered the two Apex radios for those vehicles. So as long as we have radios that work, the mobile radios in the cars work, we just know we have to transition. So that's not the immediate gratification unless we want to get the repeaters for them to benefit the mobile when the officers are in the house. The mobile radio works off the repeater in the car. So the officer's talking on his radio, it's going to his car, and then the car to dispatch. Which is basically using the mobile radio, the car radio to dispatch, which works fine. But they're ten grand a pop.
Sadly, in this political climate at the state, there's not a lot of extra money for police.
There's not, no. No, and it's actually being reversed, it's a shame, I can go and do a tangent on it, I won't, but yeah.
So there's a couple block standards over there today then?
Yes, yes. All right, with that said, page seven details the police budget. And we are budgeting one million five hundred seven thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars in personnel. And Mark did knock down some of Brandon's items on, if you look at the requested versus proposed. Brandon had requested three sixty-one, three hundred and fifty thousand in materials and services. And Mark reduced that down to three hundred and thirty-eight, eight hundred and fifty thousand. Capital outlay, Brandon just went over that, originally requested two hundred and forty-four thousand five, and reduced that down to one hundred and eighty-three thousand five hundred dollars. Transfers, he has to make his annual payment to the sewer reserve loan of thirty-two thousand seven hundred seventy-six dollars. And under debt service, the two thousand and six dollars worth of interest that goes to the sewer fund for interest on that loan. For a total budget for the police department, two million sixty-four thousand three hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Keep it, keep in mind on the personnel when you see that, other than the fringe benefits and the personnel costs for PERS going up. The reason that it is so high is now that we have the two SROs being fully funded by the school are in there, so you're aware of that, that's why it's so high.
Yes, that does include everybody.
Yeah.
So Brandon, if the legislation decides to adopt that new rule of eliminating the SROs from the schools, where does that leave us with those two officers?
Gone.
And the funding basically is gone for them also?
Yeah, it's the school district's money, yeah.
Yeah, it's the school district. So on page eight, that will total the general fund budget of two million nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars, excuse me, two million nine hundred and twenty thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars. And if I could get a motion and a second with the two changes that were motioned and seconded and approved on the library. We will forward this to City Council.
Could I have a motion, please, on the two library rules?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Next, we are going to go into Public Works, and you have a little summary here that was done by Megan of where we are finishing up for this fiscal year and what we're looking forward to from next. Followed by Andy's request, and this is a full request from Public Works, it includes the sewer fund, the street drainage fund, the parks and the community center. But those will be broken down again as we get into each individual one, you'll see the streets coming up again. Page nine has our revenue sources, we're gonna start there for streets. So we have two capital, networking capital that we have to deal with in the streets. We have seventy-four thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars worth of bike paths. And Andy and I are gonna do a little bit of research on that and decide what else. I know that it seems like you can do pedestrian pass, bike pass, and potentially maybe even some sidewalk, if it pertains to those. One percent of your gasoline tax money that we collect from the state, that the state gives us per capita, has to be set aside for those items. You don't get to just spend it all on streets as much as you'd like to, so that's.
We can't just paint green stripes on the street?
Nope, I wish, nope. So we've set that money aside separately from the, from the other capital outlay that we will be bringing in of two hundred and thirty-two thousand six hundred and thirty dollars. We've reduced the interest income, again, nothing, not the local government investment pools, not a bank account, nothing is providing interest at this point in time. So we've cut that back, we've left Ms. Lays' income at six thousand, gasoline tax, we've left it about the same as well. We'll come in pretty close this year. Again, that's per capita, people think that it's gas bought in Winston, they call me all the time and telling me they pay taxes and their roads are really bad. And I'm like, well, if you want me to tell you how it works, I'll be happy to, but then they don't, because they really just wanted to call and complain. But I explained to them that the state collects gasoline tax from everyone and then dishes it out to the cities and the counties and so forth by your, by your population. That's nothing to do with how much gas you buy or where you buy it. Street SDCs, we're still doing really well with housing starts, so we've left our street SDCs as they were this year, hoping that we'll continue that same momentum. Public Works fees, we left that at three thousand as well. The state grant exchange fund, we've used it this year in 2021, we will not have that available to us next year. And it sounds like it's gonna be a nightmare, Andy's gonna have some new forms and some more fun to figure out how he's, how he's gonna get it, to be able to spend it. Storm drain utility fees are still budgeted at thirty-six thousand.
Does that include all the new construction also?
Does what, I'm sorry?
Storm, storm drain fees? Have those not been calculated in?
Well, your storm, your storm fund fee is a dollar per household, per month. So we won't, and, you know, we won't see a huge influx right away, but we may, we may have to start bumping that up a little bit. We should have money in the transportation utility fund, you'll see it when we get there, to, to potentially bring in that one thirty-seven four, a hundred thirty-seven thousand four hundred dollars. And again, that, when we get into the transportation utility fund, the purpose of that transportation fee is to help offset any transit that we have to pay towards the county. Which for the, for most of that is now coming out of our payroll taxes. We do not long, any longer have to write a check to the transit district for the Utrans buses and so forth. Payroll taxes are, and state and fed monies are now operating those. So that does allow more of that one dollar to go right back into those people's streets, so when I tell them that, that makes them a little bit happier.
And on the networking capital on the bike path?
Yes.
Is that a federal mandated?
Yes.
That you don't have any choice on?
Yes, there's an ORS that specifically states.
I hate to sound ignorant, but where is the bike pass in Winston?
We have a few over here at Grape Pass, on Tybalt Bend, they're not really a path, they're a bike marked out.
A lane.
A lot of them are in need of work, but the road services are, that's something that Andy, we talked about was, and we talked about this with the chief today too, is potentially doing some things like that. But kind of tied it in, so.
Because as I understand it, if it's a federal mandated, then you have, in bike paths, when you do major road construction or new roads, is that correct?
Typically, I do.
And so does that have an impact then on our own budget when we do something with the streets?
That's why we, we kind of stay in our local stuff, so we're out of the state roads, we're doing our local roads. So like our east side project, we didn't have to do that, it's not applicable in our situation. It would be nice, but it drives the cost up beyond our abilities to be able to actually pave the road, so it's just kind of a.
Thank you.
So with that, we should have, hopefully, nine hundred and fifty-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars to, to start our, to do, to work with on our street fund for next year. And then the second page here is, again, Andy's breakout of what he's requested. Do you remember what Mark, you kind of made some notes there?
Yeah, it's pretty much the, we know the sweeper's out, we know that, we just put it, we bring it back to keep everybody reminding, I guess.
That looks like it went up about fifty thousand.
Yeah, it's, depending on what you want, typically when we look at something, we try to get the, you know, understanding with the, where we're at. So this particular one we're looking at, it has all the bells and whistles and everything like that, that would be very applicable, it just depends on what our situation is. So the trucks are the same thing, and then the street drainage monies are lowered down a little bit, and then the fifty thousand for the office, so.
Is there a reason that when you have a very high-priced ticket item such as a sweeper, that you don't put in a certain amount of money to increment it so you can buy it maybe in three to four years?
Well, that's kind of what he does, by continuing to put it on his wish list, it keeps it right there in front, and any money that you have left over, I mean, it's not going, the money in the street fund doesn't, doesn't go anywhere else. So carryover, reserves, anything that we would have is there, and we know it needs to come out of there. So sitting aside, sitting a little bit of money aside each, you know, each year isn't gonna get him that three hundred five thousand. Again, that's one of our wish list items potentially, if we, you know, if we get that money in, you know, maybe, maybe his dream could come true.
I figured that's brand new, right?
Yeah.
Have we looked at a used one?
Yeah, right now, I'll be honest with you, I talked to Mark, we knew the sweeper wasn't gonna happen, we put it on there. If Mark, if the boss goes, hey, you got a hundred thousand dollars or whatever, and then we would look at that hundred thousand dollar range, and I'd come back to Mark and say, yeah, I think we can do it, boss, or whatever the case may be. But that's kind of the approach we're taking. This particular one here, it's a stainless steel box, it's got the pressure washer, it's got a back, it's got other potentials, when we're doing street signs, you can power wash signs off. A lot of, a lot of bells and whistles for longevity, but it's, these major purchases like the camel, that was a, that was a demo purchase, we bought that years ago. And it's, it's, once again, it's a big piece of equipment now, we're, we just replaced the pump on it, we have a lot of wear items, a lot of moved parts on that, it's another big ticket item, so, you know, unfortunately, these items are very expensive.
But for the most part though, like a used street sweeper is a used street sweeper.
Yes.
Probably more problems than it's worth.
There's a reason people sell them.
Yeah.
Our, right, like our sweeper, we could, we could sell our sweeper to somebody, a little community, it's a, it's a nice little sweeper. Just the city of Winston is, is grown beyond the capabilities of that current three cubic yard sweeper, so we're making multiple trips, and it's, it's all by hand. And so the new ones, self-lift bodies, you dump into a dumpster, the guys aren't out there with a rake, with face dust mask and paraphernalia, raking at the back of the sweeper that you picked up numerous items, which I don't give any detail. So that's, we're quite aware of that, and we're, we know the situation, and we'll deal with what we need to deal with on that for now, so.
One thing I'd like to throw in from the planning department is.
Three hundred?
If.
Thank you very much, meeting adjourned.
I tried. Every department in the city, and you guys know it as well as we do, that the city, the police department, Public Works, is at capacity with, with our population. And our population is growing, and the rest of our departments aren't. And so we're kind of bulging at the seams, and we're waiting for that money to come in, it's there. And, but our, our different departments are basically treading water, you know, grasping for air right now, because we are at our limits. And I'm sure you guys see it better than I do, but we see it with the building and the permits and stuff like that, and we've got a few problems in planning, you know, right now. And, but that's, all, all of these budgets are, they're, for a city our size, they're actually fairly low. So, because that's where we're at, you know.
I don't think that, that, maybe a little early in the budget to make the statement, but I don't think there's a lot of extra in this thing, and if any. And that's something that we have to be thankful for, but at the same point in time, we gotta figure out how to grow some of this stuff.
We do, and the revenue sources, we've gotta look for alternative revenue sources.
Buy Bitcoin.
Yeah.
That was actually Lenny's idea, I just stole it.
Doggone it, I'm sixty-five cents.
But, you know, the chief, his, his department right now is stressed to the limit, you know, Public Works is the same way, they're, with the city's growth, what it is, with these new houses and stuff going in. They're basically at capacity of the work they can do, with the equipment they have. And you guys are at capacity with, with the budget you have, you're basically using every single dime you got and looking for more. And so we, we've gotta, gotta, gotta start looking at outside, outside the box, kind of.
I'm gonna bring this up, I do every year. And what's, one of the things that really hurts us is we have a fantastic fire department, they got a four dollar and sixty-five cent pack rate. And District Two, who actually runs it, has a three dollar and sixteen cent pack rate. The city has never really gone out, and I, I know they're looking at it now, about contracting or whatever, but what I've heard of the negotiations on it, and that was long time ago. but what I've heard of the negotiations on it, and that was long family ago, they want to assume our tax rate.
But isn't it good, or isn't a Porsche that's four dollars and fifteen cents building we're paying for?
No, no, that building was supposed to have been paid for by ambulance services, and the building is paid off.
It is paid off, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a misnomer. Their tax base came in many years ago. And they, even at a point where it went up automatically six percent a year, and they just let it go up.
But yet they still can't run it, I'm like, I'll go.
Anyway, but what, what I'm saying is that I think it's time that the city get behind them contracting and make sure that if they do consolidate or whatever, that we see a savings in the overall tax rate. I mean, you're talking about fifty, that it could be reduced and not touch what their tax base is. Even if they only reduce it a dollar for us, it's a lot of money, because you're going to be getting out of compression. I, I assume we're still in compression.
Yeah.
So what, we losing twenty, forty thousand dollars a year of that, I don't know.
Yeah.
Is that something that's been looked at or not?
I honestly don't know, I haven't been part of that conversation, so.
Yeah.
I've been bringing it up for twenty years, and that's why I said, you know.
I'll figure that waste water from the sweeper.
So you keep, they're going to have to give it hers. Got to run them over first.
Okay, I would like to get to page ten and go over the street, uh, street and drainage costs. We have personnel services, a budget of three hundred fifty-one thousand, four hundred ninety-nine dollars. And it looks to me like materials and services have gone up just a little. I know Andy's supplies have been, Mark did not nix that one on these. It looks like he actually, he let you get some of your supplies, he's been running low on supplies, um, with one of the bigger ticket items. Um, nothing else substantial here increasing. A hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars in materials and services. And capital outlay, again, um, new equipment, fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Street and drainage improvements, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, six sixty-two. Again, Mark reduced that a little bit. Public workshop, uh, down from forty-five thousand to twenty thousand. And again, we left that seventy-five thousand dollars in there, so Andy and I and Mark take a look at that and see if there's some, some money that needs to be spent there. So total capital outlay, three eighty-six, four hundred and twelve dollars. Transfers, uh, two, one for the storm franchise fee that goes to the general fund, and the street SDCs that go to the reserve fund, twenty-five thousand. Total of twenty-seven thousand in transfers, for a total of nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars for the street fund.
What was the twenty-five thousand dollars taken off the public works shop? What, what was that for?
Uh, it's, it's outlined here, but that Andy gave you. He wanted, um, uh, it's shop ADA, some paving, some fencing, and some office equipment and furniture. He had budgeted a whole hundred thousand, it's split between the three funds, it's split between Park Street and Sewer. He asked for a hundred thousand, and Mark said, no, he can have fifty.
Okay.
I'll say, uh, he's that whole, I mean, it's on the lot, but when you start dealing with the situation, the cost of lumber and materials, it's very easily to spend, spend that money. So that's security, you know, the, the goal with the, with the offices, transitioning some of the workload from City Hall down to public works, which is, uh, is the ultimate goal, and to secure that area somewhat. So that fencing, allowing, one of the issues we have now with public works is we have that main gate. So we have folks come through, and you have equipment coming through, it's just not a good situation. So the fencing, the secure fencing, and then changing our approaches, um, so, but we'll, we'll make do with what we need to do down there.
Okay, if I can have a motion to move this forward to city council?
Move.
You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close?
Okay. Then we come into the sewer fund, on page thirteen. Uh, again, um, we're going to start with our resources. Uh, we should have carryover this year of seven hundred and fifty-two thousand and thirty-six dollars. The interest on here, the majority of it, um, a lot of it comes from late, just late charges, penalties. And then the sewer has, um, the sewer reserve fund has the largest amount of money in the reserve fund, and it's drawing the best interest of, of, of anything, and local government investment pool counts. So we're hoping to have sixty-six thousand in interest again this year, thereabouts. Misland's income, we've got sewer user fees, um, we left those at one, one million, three. Again, um, it takes a little bit of time for those new homes to, to build that up. System development charges, we left it at the same as it was this year as well, eighty-five thousand. Still trying to be a little bit conservative. Uh, sewer user certified, that is, the accounts that don't pay their sewer on time get certified with the assessor's office. We just get lumps of money in on those, so that's basically past due sewer money that eventually comes back in. Uh, sewer connection fees, uh, we're leaving that at twenty-five thousand again this year. Um, that's for new sewer connections. Uh, sewer plant upgrade fees, again, leaving those at one hundred and ninety thousand. Uh, no loans, no grants coming in this time, and no transfers. Total revenues for twenty twenty-two, two million, four hundred and eighty-two thousand and thirty-six dollars.
Is the sewer plant, uh, could you tell us, with all the new housing going in, what, what is our capacity? Are we set for the next ten years, fifteen years, or before we have to enlarge it?
Currently, we're about seventy percent capacity, but depends on growth. In terms of upgrades, upgrades to the plant, um, we would have more, uh, like our contact chambers, headworks, something like that. So not, not so much capacity in terms of treatment.
So we're good for ten, fifteen years, give or take?
Give or take, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and then the following page is going to give you a breakdown of the items that Andy requested. And then followed behind that is the two loans. Yay, we've paid off one of our other sewer loans, so that was awesome. We've got the, um, the one that we share with Green Sanitary, which is a DEQ one. It's the second plant upgrade from back in twenty fourteen. You'll see the breakdown on that. And then our new one for the snow pump station. Um, and you'll see that we will be getting our five hundred thousand dollars worth of principal reduction from DEQ come August, when we start making payments on that. So again, Andy, do you want to go over your, any of your capital outlay items?
You know, I think they're pretty well, they kind of run.
Same.
They run consecutive, um, because they're all split, they're split. So they're pretty much the same thing, it just, uh.
And Mark reduced your mainline replacement to half, half a million, not, not a million.
Yeah, he cut, he cut that down to, um, and of course, office is the same.
Office and the one truck.
We did get the, uh, you know, the preliminary stything, I don't know, we started in that process already. So we're, that's still on the books to kind of afford on that one. And the push cam, uh, he, we okayed, or he okayed that one. And the spray brook, Andy starts working on that one, and the computer clerk working on that one. So that's pretty much the items.
Where's the mainline replacement going to be this?
We haven't decided yet. We, one of the things we want to do, Megan and myself have, have talked, uh, with Mark, of course, thinking some of these areas out, we try to balance east and west, but it's about two years to three years in between money cycles. So we have enough recouped to use our street transportation funds. Exchange rate, that exchange rate, Andy kind of alluded on that a little earlier, they've changed that rate down. So it means we'll be getting less money back, and it takes longer to recoup money. So when we do a sewer project, we try to look at the streets. So hard, we're hard pressed to find a street that we can pay without doing the sewer, and the storm, and the utilities. So there's no sense of doing something half-heartedly that would, would add. So if we can find something that we can do, um, we'd like to do something, something quite aside. I hate this long, long answer, but that's the truth. But right now, we're trying to wrap up this guy right here, which is a big one, and there's always problems come up, so.
I just thought that you might have one out there.
We, we got a couple, um, we got a couple.
Okay.
We'll share them with the council when we get, we get a load.
Sounds good, just carry.
All right, so the sewer starts on page fourteen, um, for expenditures. And we're budgeting four hundred and seventy-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine for personnel. And eight, excuse me, nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-six for materials and services. You will see that, again, one of the largest ones is the wastewater treatment facility. And again, that, um, and people look at it and go, well, you've spent that much in the past, and that's been a blessing, because that money is not, is, is currently being offset by the, um, leachate and the other income that we're getting from the plant, from the, by, from the county. Uh, but that's, can stop at any time. So this number always has to represent one hundred percent of the city's portion to fund that wastewater facility. And so that's why it's always higher, and if we're lucky and things keep going the way they do, we will always spend less than, than we have to budget. But that is, again, why that one is up, is because.
Is that why the reason that twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, the number is lower?
Absolutely, absolutely. And there was a short time there when we weren't getting any leachate income, and so you have to, you have to plan for the worst, absolutely. And so that's why that number is high. I was trying to say if there was anything.
What makes it that high, or is it the cost of running?
Oh, yeah.
That plant?
We're going to get to that budget, and you'll see, and yeah, everything, electricity, chemicals, yeah, and, and maintenance, and we've had to do upgrades and.
And that leachate money is going away.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, they're in the middle of, we're in the beginning of building a treatment facility up there.
Oh, really?
Where they're going to take out.
See there?
That phase one will still bring discharge to it, because they have phase two and phase three, and by three, they'll discharge to.
Do we have a timeframe?
We're still on phase one time.
Do they have a timeframe when we'll start doing?
Um, it went out to bid, I believe, last night.
So it's not that far away?
No, no.
Okay. Darn.
What we had.
Right, yeah, it's been, it's been a blessing. Okay, um, capital outlay, again, um, the vehicle came off, and Mark reduced the mainline replacement to five hundred thousand, and the shop down to twenty thousand. So capital outlay for sewer fund is five hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, transfers, um, to the general fund, sixty-five thousand dollars for the sewer franchise fee, and eighty-seven thousand dollars to the sewer SDC reserve fund, that goes to the reserves. Um, again, we need to look at, if we have another big sewer project and it's an expansion type project, looking at spending of some of those SDCs, because that's what they're set aside for. There was some, even though Mark reduced some of the expenditures and capital out for, for Andy, he put one hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and forty-seven in contingency. So if things come in and things run smoothly, there should be money left over, which is always a good thing. Uh, debt service, we again have the two loans, the plant upgrade loan number two, principal and interest that we share with Green Sanitary, and then our new loan, principal and interest on the snow pump station. Total debt service is one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars. For a total of two million, four hundred and eighty-two thousand and thirty-six dollars for the sewer fund.
Do I have a motion to accept this as read?
Aye.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
All right. So the next fund is the reserve fund, and it's pretty short and sweet. We currently have, at the end of this fiscal year, six thirty, twenty twenty-one, two million, two hundred and ninety-six thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars in the reserve fund. We are budgeting to transfer, as you see in the other funds, four thousand and fifty dollars from the general fund, from the park SDCs, twenty-five thousand dollars from the street fund for the street SDCs, and eighty-seven thousand dollars from the sewer SDCs, and the repayment of the loan from law enforcement of thirty-two thousand, seven seventy-six. Again, that goes to the sewer, sewer reserve, for a total of two million, four hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars in reserves. And the only expenditures that we are budgeting for this year is the ten thousand dollars. If it comes necessary and available, we will move the ten thousand dollars out of this park, street SDC into the general fund. But like I said, they've got a ways to go on that project, so, but it's there, it's budgeted, so if they need it, we'll get it to them. And then the balance is two million, four hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars for reserve for future expenditures. So again, your reserve fund in the amount of two million, four hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars.
And is that in an account where it's gaining interest?
Yes, yeah, pitiful, but yeah. Yes, there's not one dime of our money that isn't in an account that's earning some interest.
Yes.
Yes. But the other option of that is if the interest rates go up and we're getting any interest on our money, then everybody's interest rates on everything else will be much higher, because we still won't get what they'll be charging. And so it's kind of a wicked double-edged sword. All right, can I get a motion in a second on the reserve fund?
Motion to accept the reserve fund? Do I have a?
So may.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. So on page twenty is the wastewater treatment facility. And I'll go over the revenues real quick, and then I'll let Chris talk about some of the expenditures on the plant. We always start this account with a zero, because basically, um, this, it's a, it's a balancing budget. The funds are shared between, uh, with, between the city, the city of Winston and Green Sanitary. And Green Sanitary pays for all of the cost of running the plant, with the exception of personnel. And we, the city, reimburse them for our portion of that. And then the city of Winston, we pay for the personnel expenditures, and then Green Sanitary reimburses their half of that. So it's a joint, it's a joint venture of sorts. And so that's why sometimes the people look at the numbers and they're like, what? And I'm like, it is, it is what it is. So this one, we, if we're lucky, we'll get three hundred and sixty dollars in interest. Again, we got like zero interest in our little bit, um, what do we call it, sinking fund that we've got in the local government investment pool. Um, we budgeted twelve hundred this year, and we're not even going to come close, so I've dropped that down to three hundred and sixty.
Wow.
Um, we will bill and receive back from, um, Green Sanitary, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars. And Winston's portion of this budget is six hundred and seventy thousand and seventy-one dollars, for a total of nine hundred and forty-four thousand and two dollars.
And, um, on reimbursement, is that, uh, is it going to cost fifty, fifty?
No, um, some of it yes, some of it no.
Because the reason I'm wondering is that green district population is considerably higher than ours.
Not done on population, it's done on flow, and Chris gives, uh, the council, um, those flow projections every month, and tells us how much of our flow and how. and how much was Green's flow.
And we have more people, but we, we have more food.
Yeah, well, so yeah, we're sending more for the treatment plant. So things, things that are, are just a set cost, telephone, you know, um, office supplies, personnel are split fifty-fifty. Things that are cost to run the plant, um, chemicals, electricity, natural gas, all of those are done on a percentage basis. Sometimes in the year, city Winston is below the fifty percent. Right now, we're a little over the fifty percent. So, but it's always done by, it's done by the month. Yeah, very much.
Well, one time we had a lot of wastewater going through the plant. Now, does that reduce some?
You mean, you mean I and I? Yeah, we mean, we had stormwater going through there. Yes, we're, we're working on it. We're getting better. Every year we get better.
Just takes money.
Yes. So anyway, so the, the revenues are nine hundred and forty-four thousand and two dollars. And the next page goes into the new equipment that the wastewater plant needs this upcoming year. Chris?
Yeah, so three expensive items. First was the replacement skid steer bobcat. Our plan was to kind of every two thousand hours replace it. The court's completely worn out. We're at eighteen hundred hours. But one of our chemicals that we received is, um, bigger tote now. It's totally past the machine. We have to make sure that the fuel tanks full before we go grab the tote.
Oh, wow.
Right. That's how it works. Um, next is digister number one gas line replacement. It needs to be replaced with a three sixteen stainless steel pipe. Work force to turn the digister online. Right. Our, our plan is to switch between digister one and digister two. And every four or five years, we're on year six now. So we're not able to turn it online because that line was.
It's fifty thousand dollars for the line?
For.
And labor, I think.
Yeah, it's all built in place.
For the project.
Yeah.
Stainless steel built in place.
Stainless. Um, next item is secondary clarifier number three. Uh, it's twenty-two years old. It's recommended every twenty to twenty-five years it gets rebuilt. It's a large structure. It's picked up with a crane, sent off to the Arizona, I believe. The majority of that cost is actually, um, the rehabilitation of the structure itself. So the concrete gets coated, all metal gets, um, taken down, bare metal, recoded or replaced. Another item that didn't make the list that got cut was actuators. We have about sixty-five thousand dollars in actuators that need to be replaced. We replaced, oh, it was actually two, like, years ago, we replaced four of them. We have another sixteen that need to be replaced. We had planned on doing another four last year, however, our area died, so money went towards that. We still have some spare parts on hand for those actuators, so we push it off to another budget.
Now, is this what you're collecting here in price? Is that the Winston share or?
This is the total cost.
Total cost, so that actually then fifty percent of this would be borne by Green District?
That is correct.
So if we vote to approve this, they have to vote to approve?
No, they, they have, no, this is our budget, they have their own.
Right, okay.
So, yep, but they'll be looking at the same number, so. So page twenty-one is our personnel cost for twenty twenty-two, uh, five hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and two dollars. And materials and services, two hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred dollars. It seems like we upped chemicals, Chris? No, it was salt?
Building maintenance.
Building maintenance?
Electricity.
And salt?
And salt and personal protective equipment.
So, uh, materials and services, two hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred dollars. Capital outlay, again, you're gonna see it's one half of the items here. And then, um, we always have the emergency sinking fund in there, that twenty-five thousand. We budget twenty-five thousand, Green Sanitary budgets twenty-five thousand. That's in case we have some kind of a hiccup. That is, it's kind of our potential contingency.
Does that twenty-five thousand roll over every year or is it?
Yep, as long as we don't spend it, it does. If we spend it, it doesn't.
Yeah.
Um, so we've got a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in capital outlay for a total budget for the wastewater treatment facility of nine hundred and forty-four thousand and two dollars.
And that includes that new equipment?
Yes.
You got your kitchen done?
That was the break room, yeah.
Break room?
Break room is, the structure's up. We have various little, uh, obivines.
Like the pool table?
Yeah. Push the bar. This one is not completely, hardly a great benefit.
They got a better package than you guys, Andy, sorry.
My goodness.
Do I have a motion to approve this budget, pardon the budget? Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Okay, thank you. Okay, local improvement district, you'll see is all zeros. It doesn't technically exist, but last year we did, um, we closed that out. So that's why it's on the left-hand side, there's nothing on the right-hand side. And so we're gonna go to the purple pages. And page twenty-six is the community center fund. And we've had a rough year. It's been rough, but thank you, Debbie, for hanging in there. We plan on having not a lot of money to carry over, but we're hoping to have about twenty-two thousand, three hundred and seventeen. So with the fact that we didn't rent it, some of our expenditures were down. But, you know, there's just the cost of having the library here and people in the, people in the kitchen and things still going. So it's not like it was a shutdown on both ends. Um, we have budgeted, uh, the rental income to stay the same as it was last year, thirty-two thousand. We didn't, we didn't look for an increase. We'll just look for things to maybe come back to some kind of norm would be awesome. Uh, the contracts, uh, we left those the same as well. There isn't any contracts that are up for renewal or anything. And we don't anticipate any increases on that end as well. Um, then you will see the twelve thousand, five hundred dollars that the city contributes to their portion for the library to keep that library over there going. So we have total revenue sources for the community center of ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
How much revenue, did you have a chance to maybe take an educated guess and see how much, how much of the funds we lost during COVID that we're not gonna get back from the community center? Did anybody look at that?
Um, I don't have my finger on the exact amount, but I certainly could look. I mean, basically, if you look at last year versus this year, it's, you know, we had a few rentals and we've got a couple more rentals coming up. But there was that big chunk there between like March and.
January?
Yeah, well, but yeah, it was like.
Like three times.
Yeah, it's just, it's been, yeah, it's how many times? Three's all? Yeah.
Yeah.
It's all. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's been significant, it's been significant. That's probably the hardest hit of all of the city was this community center. COVID-wise, I mean, it was tough on everybody dealing with the public and sanitizing and sanitizing and all of that. But to just like shut something down, Public Works can't shut down. City Hall didn't shut down. The police department didn't shut down.
So with the contracts for people renting it, renting this out, we're having to be extremely flexible there?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And the council did waive some fees for, for those, absolutely.
Well, the only question I would have then is with the loss of revenue, is there anything that needs to be updated in the community center that would have been, uh, taken care of from the lost revenue that?
That's the Andy, Andy question, I don't know. Is there anything that just had to be done? We've got the wish list right here that is on your next page.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think, I don't think the rentals that we lost, I mean, we're talking, we budgeted thirty-two thousand dollars. So there's not a lot you can do here. What we need is a new roof on this building.
Right.
So one of the, one of the things, uh, Public Works tries to look at a, a positive outlook on things because we're surrounded by negativity all of the time. So we try to put a positive spin on things. So we use, we utilize that opportunity, um, with Debbie's, uh, she has a lot of things she wanted to look at. She, so if you notice, I don't know if anybody's noticed, but the colors, we changed the colors. We've added, um, Debbie's identity was added as an art wall. Um, we, so we dressed up an art wall. She's, she's, if you look to this little mirror, this open door down here, you'll see a picture there. Um, there's just some little things down here coming in. We've painted the walls, coming in the service hall entries, all been painted and updated, all the, if you guys remember last time, all holes and everything was up there? So we utilized that opportunity, we had the professional carpet company come in and address the carpets. Um, so we've went up on the roof and done some things we can in house. We addressed some, some spots in the building. We've addressed the catering kitchen. We, uh, went through some of our supplies that have been stacked in there for years. Um, so we took that opportunity as, as an opportunity to kind of.
Spray cleaning.
This is our building. The city took it up back over, so let's take ownership of it. Um, you know, we've, Debbie's got some nice little things hanging up, some, some things she's done. Um, been a really good addition. Uh, her and Megan have worked extremely well on these colorings. But that's, that's kudos to, to these, to the staff. They did a great job up here taking this thing. I just wanna share that because they're not gonna say anything. They're, they're just, they're pretty.
I think it's looking far better than it has.
Yes, I'm very.
Thank you for that very much. My question, and I'm gonna jump ahead just a little bit, down to the new equipment line, um, eleven thousand requested, you only got two. One of the problems that I see is this meeting generally, not specifically, but we have a real issue with communication up here. We don't have a proper phone setup for what we're trying to do. We don't have enough speaker volume or microphones or whatever to fill the room. And I think if this COVID thing is gonna continue, we may end up in short order meeting to have council meetings held up here as some of these things start coming to a head that we're, we're working on. And we've got to address that.
I, I'll add to that because you, you missed Monday's meeting and the turnout that we had from the community Monday was, that room was packed.
Okay, good, good, I like hearing that.
Right.
But if we can have to have it up here, then we're gonna have to have some additional sound system, um, communication. And, and I, I know Mark and I have talked about it at one, at one point. Um, I know it's not gonna be inexpensive, but it's not really a wish, it's a requirement as far as our transparency as a city government.
Well, I think was kind of talked about earlier is the potential revenues for, revenue sources the city has. So we do have, we do have a potential, this does one here. Um, but you're absolutely correct, from the, from the floor jacks, none of this stuff works no more. So the, the phones, we have two jacks that work in this year now. We've lost our phones up here, we've lost our internet. We're dealing with that, we just had NextCom come today and finally got internet back to the teen center. Um, so we're having issues with our communications up here. Um, it's been a hospitage over the years of people coming in and charger, different outfits, um, who add stuff. So we're trying to clean this thing up, but, um, but you're absolutely right, it's very expensive. So what we, what we bring into council, uh, kind of a estimate.
I'm gonna try to pick an open sore there.
No, no, it's, it's not an open sore, you're, you know, we had a, it's, you're absolutely correct. It needs some, it needs some stuff, that's for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Andy, I, if I remember correctly from last year's budget committee, wasn't the price of the roof about the same? Did we get a new estimate or are we going off the estimate?
No, that's, that's, that's a hundred and two thousand, we, we put in a hundred and five. It crosses a hundred thousand dollar threshold, um, which makes it a bully, um, which makes it expensive. So, um, the roof's the roof. And it depends on what you get because you get up there, and anybody's had roofwork done, that's how that goes. You, you suddenly find a rotten spot and you suddenly find this and you have that. We have, we know for a fact that one of the issues here is that standing water we have in this roof. So it's creating these weak points in the roof. So we have to lower all these scuppers down. We have, anyway, it's, it's gonna be a pretty big problem.
Can we do the roof in the house, Andy?
No.
How long was the warranty on this roof? This building's not that old.
I think it was, uh, yeah, I think we missed it about, about six years, um, we lost the warranty. But one of the problems with the cars we roped that's on here was if you touch that roof without their okay and there, there, there are people that work on, we void the warranty. So we had leaks over the years that we've had, uh, we've had different companies come in here and work on this roof. But you see some of the spots around. So we get little roots, we had a AC unit up top or one of our HVAC, uh, froze up and created an issue, created a leak. Don't know about it till larger part in the service hall. So it's been things like that. It's just, it's just a big, big area, big flat roof. It's a twenty mil roof, they recommend a forty-five, sixty mil. It's a thin roof.
Then we don't make that mistake again.
So is that what we're getting next time?
Technically, we didn't make the mistake, right? We didn't have a. When they built it originally, we didn't. It was a gift, that's what I'm saying. So we didn't have any sick, correct?
Correct.
Right? So we got, we got. How long before this, this is a, it's kind of a wish item, but it's a half due item, the roof.
I think we'll know.
I hope we don't get to that point.
Right.
Yeah. Then you have a better contingency.
Yeah.
No, I, I, you know, I, we have professionals come in and we just go by what they recommend doing the roof.
Are we there now?
I, I believe that we should do the roof when we, when we can.
Yeah, as soon as we can is what you're saying?
Yes.
Tuesday perhaps?
Yeah, you guys, you guys know where it's at.
It would be cheaper to do the roof than to have to build a new building if it flooded. Right.
Yeah. On the, uh, is, is there a possibility of getting a PPE grant for the contractor?
For what kind?
For the assistant that is doing the booking and stuff like that.
Oh, to go up for it?
Yeah, COVID grant? Well, uh, uh, yeah, COVID grant, uh, that they're, they're actually advertising all this stuff now.
I mean, I, I wrote the city plan for the hundred and eighty-four thousand, that was with the PPE and the, that's a hundred and eighty-four that went with the one point two that the city's getting, is my understanding.
Right.
But we've taken all that money that was allotted to the city of Winston. If that's what you're talking about.
Well, no, well, um, maybe we already did it and we can't do it. I was just thinking that since, I, I take it you're the one that's doing it?
I'm the librarian.
Oh, okay. Whoever works at, at taking reservations and stuff like this, it's really no different than a restaurant, you know? And we were trying to keep this going. I would have thought that we could put that towards a PPE grant. But if we've already applied for it and that's not in there, then we probably can't.
Always, I think what you're saying is, if you're looking at the community center as a business, it's lost revenue. So write a grant, the COVID grant for the lost business.
That's exactly what you said, yeah. Debbie, get up.
Teresa, do you have something to say, Teresa?
Well, I, well, I was trying to, but I could barely hear the people in the background. But did, did they ask how long the roof was gonna last, I believe, and, and what was Andy's answer?
Uh, they recommend doing it so as we can. Changing, you get into roof addresses, possible.
So would you say it was like the top priority on your list out of everything?
For the community center? Yes.
No, in general.
I have to look at this as my top priority for the community center, yes.
Well, you still want a street sweep.
But I mean, there's a.
Well, so is this, the sewer mains that need repaved are just as important in that the, the, uh, sewer structures and the, the other buildings and the parks and. So for the community center as a standalone. So for the community center, as a standalone item that we have, which is a standalone item, it's the most, the roof is the biggest, most expensive part of the building that needs to be addressed ASAP or as soon as possible as funds allow, as things, yeah.
Again, if we get some of that COVID money and we get some infrastructure or something, that will be one of the first things that we'll be looking at.
One thing I have is, you can't count the COVID, no.
No.
So, that aside, how do we budget for, for this, for this, for this project?
The community center has never paid for itself. It always is, it's always been subsidized by the general fund.
Right.
So you're going to find somebody out of the general fund.
Okay. Thanks, Andy.
Yep.
So can we, as a line item, can we prioritize, prioritize it as like number one or not?
You don't need to, it, it is. We haven't budgeted for it, Andy asked for it, we don't have the money for it. Again, unless, unless the funds become available or God forbid something happened, that's what the general fund money will be doing with the contingency money.
See, that's the thing that I'm concerned most about, is we don't have the money to fix it now. But if the thing caves in, we'll have later repair.
Right.
Insurance.
Potentially, but yes, but.
I, I just, there's, there's a hole in our thought process there.
Why wait, it goes out?
Right.
Right.
Right, that's the problem with all the local improvements here. It's like the timing. Where are our fees as far as this compared to other places? What, where I'm going on this is, is there room to maybe add a small surcharge on, on the fees to go directly towards? Excuse me, Bruce, Debbie, did you guys, you guys did something a couple of years ago on that? Were we pretty much on par or were we just a little bit under?
For raising the fees?
No, for, with, with the competition in the neighborhood, we were.
We're way low.
Way low. But at that point in time, we weren't looking at full either. So that was our angst in raising the breaks then is that it wasn't full.
So maybe an increase in our fees would, would help?
Well, maybe if, if we had an increase in our fees, but that part be put into the building fund. We're also now considering that you'll actually be able to rent the place.
That's, yeah.
But we also need to be concerned that we don't make the rent too high. No, no, my point being, COVID, we'll be able to rent the place, question mark?
Right.
You can, you can give the damn thing away for free and if nobody can come in here, what's the point?
That's right.
Will they feel if you do it?
There you go.
Well, let's put it this way, if I had the hundred thousand dollars, I'd give it to you, but I don't.
I appreciate that thought.
I would, I would, and I will buy a lottery ticket because I am a gambling woman, so.
Then you'd have to write a supplemental budget.
Yep, I will, I will and I won't complain. Look, the silly crazy lady won the lottery and she gave us money, we're putting a roof on the place.
Well, another item too, I just wanted to point out was the on-demand hot water. Almost, nobody's probably been in our mechanical room, but there are two fifty gallon hot water tanks that run and are high consumption of, of gas anyway. So basically, we have these two big tanks in here to fire up the kitchen and a few, well, there's a sink over here and of course, mountains. So the on-demand's a cost of that, of course, but these, once again, these are older items, they will be like everything.
Are they on-demand water heaters now?
No.
No.
Those on-demands do not work with commercial dishwashers, just.
Yeah, I.
As in a front.
Really?
Yeah.
So the one, yeah, the one we checked into, I haven't done a whole lot of research on it, but had favorable feedback, but I haven't done it in the kitchen.
Yeah, talk to a commercial dishwasher guy and see what he'll tell you.
Yep. I did not know that.
So I was trying to do it where we were and they said, no, 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 we're.
Really?
I, I switched to one at home and it was probably the worst thing I could have.
Was it gas or electric?
Gas.
Really?
Yeah. You get really, really hot water, but not for very long.
Well, then shorten your showers.
Well, I'm short already.
Okay, let's, let's move on. Who did this?
Okay, page twenty-seven, we have budgeted ten thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars for personnel expenditures. And we have budgeted fifty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars for materials and services. One of the things that Mark and I discussed that we felt was going to be beneficial for both sides is we dropped that personnel reimbursement to the general fund. So Debbie is now a city employee. We got a better grip of our, our costs for this building and so we decided that we would drop that. It used to be kind of a placeholder because staff was here doing maintenance and doing stuff and, and the general fund was, you know, basically paying for those staff. So we decided we would drop it and I think it, it didn't hurt the general fund and I think it's going to help this fund. So we don't have to make that transfer back and forth. Good to see what we've budgeted. We, we were going to up, building maintenance and, and Mark cut that back for some, so I'm hoping that we'll do okay with that. He cut professional services a little bit and I think those are the major items that we cut back. So we've got materials and services down to fifty-four thousand, nine hundred. We've budgeted twenty-nine thousand, seven sixty-nine for capital outlay, building improvements and two thousand dollars towards new equipment. And I think that was just kind of a placeholder last year. I don't think it was any one specific item for the two thousand. So potentially, we have technically thirty-one thousand, seven sixty-nine if we needed to put into this building.
And that, and that could cover the hot water tanks?
It could.
Will the sound system be considered a building improvement?
Yes.
Most definitely.
So we have four expenditures, total of ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Do I have a motion to approve the community center budget?
It'll be.
About a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, thank you. All right. Transportation utility fund, we anticipate having seventy-two thousand, six hundred dollars carryover. Transportation fees, sixty-five thousand dollars. And our dialer ride contract, if it goes through for next year, is eleven thousand, four hundred dollars. And we've been getting contributions, they've been coming down because the same thing, dialer ride has been less active with this COVID stuff. My drivers get like one or two rides a day sometimes and sometimes that's it. They've had a few days when it's busier, but not a lot. So I budgeted five hundred dollars for contributions. So we have a total of one hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars worth of revenue. And materials and services for this fund, the majority of them, again, like I said, you'll see the contract services transit, that was for the U-Trans and that has gone away. So the majority of these, with the exception of that first line item, transportation utility, NOC two hundred, the rest of these are dialer ride. Associated cost, auditing, insurance, the phone, vehicle operations, the stipends for the volunteers. They totaled twelve thousand, one hundred dollars this year. I did not budget anything for capital outlay and what we did with the money instead, if this money comes in and we have it, we will transfer one hundred, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars to the street fund so that Andy can use it to do some street repairs.
Do I have a motion to approve this?
It'll move.
About a second? All in favor?
Aye.
So that concludes our budget and I would like one final motion. The total city budget is nine million, nine hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And I would like a motion to move this budget in that amount to the council.
It'll move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It'll move.
Okay.
We're cutting yours.
She's cutting me in four years.
What's in four years?
I'm eligible to retire, does that make you feel old?
I do it before we turn twenty-one.
Cindy, are you ready for retirement?
I'm ready to adjourn the meeting. Adjourn the meeting.
Oh. Do I have a motion to adjourn the budget meeting?
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's closed.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm ready for, I'm always ready for it.
I'm going to save you two bucks.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned at six o'clock PM.